Call to order, the Avon Town Council meeting for the first of December of 2022. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Greg Zuzen.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Aaron Tivabah.
Present.
Steve Eisenbarth.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is our consent agenda, check register for one December and approval of minutes for November 17th meeting. The questions, comments, not entertaining motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, roll call vote, please.
Aaron Tivabah.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Forgive me, Ryan. We were supposed to, you want to do before the public comment? Got it. It's not on our copy of the agenda. Forgive me. We're going to do the swearing in of our new officers. Over to you, Chief Stoops.
Thank you and welcome everyone for being here this evening. This is probably one of, if not the most favorite parts of this job that I get to do. I have the honor and privilege of introducing you tonight to three of our new police recruits that just started with our department. These are some amazing people. I'm going to go through their, a little bit of their background and bio here for you tonight, so you can have a chance to meet them. And then following that, we'll have our honorable Judge Red Stewart from Superior Court II conduct the swearing in ceremony. So at any time, family members, you want to come up and take pictures. This is for you. So with your loved one, or just if you just want to take picture of the ceremony in general. The first officer I'd like to introduce to you is Officer Adam Quilter. Adam, you want to come on up? Adam was raised by his parents Ricky and Kimberly. He's a graduate from Tri-West High School here in Hendricks County. Pretty interesting note, he won a state championship in football at Tri-West. And so I've heard a lot about that from not just him, but from people in the community that know him. So it sounds like that was a pretty amazing moment for him and his team. He studied business at Ivy Tech and received his license and certificate in lawn and turf management from Purdue University in Lafayette. He's married to his wife Christina. And they still have the same first letter, A, so I can't remember their names, but they're, I think they're here tonight. Yep, right there. Raise your hands. There you go. Yeah. So he did the opposite of us. All of our daughters have the same ending letter. So I told you're going to, you have a lot of years of getting their names confused ahead of you, so. Officer Quilter put his career on law enforcement on hold a while back. He's a little older than our newer recruits, by today's standards, anyway. He put his career on hold so that he could help support his wife and his family while she pursued her career in nursing and finished her education and training and everything. So pretty commendable on his part. So now he's ready to get started on his career, and I'm sure they can't wait to support him as he embarks upon that. During the past 17 years and plus, he's owned and operated his own business from the time he was a teen. He's ran his own landscaping. He's been at that long. It's been pretty successful. And his customers were pleased with his, with the product that he produced and provided to them. And so that went a long way with us because today, if you can run your own business and maintain a profit, support your family with it, you must have some really good qualities. So we look forward to seeing those qualities shine as he embarks on his new career here with the Avon Police Department. So you want to step on over here? The next officer I'd like to introduce is Stephen Carrier. Stephen is raised by his parents, Christopher Julie. He's born, yeah, in New Orleans. Don't get too excited, LSU fans, because shortly after he was born, he moved here to Indiana. He's a graduate of Zionsville High School. He studied criminal justice at IU Bloomington, received his criminal justice degree last May. 2022 has been a big year for him. Not only did he start a new career, but he was also engaged and got married this year. Just how long ago now? How many weeks? About a month. Yeah, so congratulations to him on that as well. He's had some interesting employment. He's worked at Home Depot. And I think, where's Brian? Where's he? So I think we may have found our new snow cone machine operator for the National Night Out. Because he worked for Connor I while he was attending college. So he's got some pretty good skill sets there that we'll be taking advantage of next summer. He has aspirations of possibly becoming a K-9 officer, a member of our SWAT slash ERT, or community outreach, which is pretty interesting because of all the years that we've been doing this, no one's ever said, "I have aspirations of doing community outreach." So as I read through his handwritten statement as to why he wanted to be here as an Avon Police Officer, one of the quotes I took out of that was, "I wholeheartedly say that I would love, that I would be very happy to work," and he did research and he really appreciated the key. He saw something in our department that he didn't see in other departments, so I really appreciate that. And hopefully he will have an opportunity to take advantage of his aspirations. Thank you. And last is Officer Cameron McDaniel. Want to come on up, Cameron? Cameron really got thrown into the mix at the last minute here because he kind of got a job offer right before we started our pre-basic program. So we were trying to bring him on quick. So his employer was pretty gracious. They understood that, supported him, and allowed him to come over here on short notice. He jumped right into training the first day. He didn't even really have an orientation. He didn't even, I don't think you even had a tour of the campus yet, have you? So he's been in classroom all week at the firing range and doing all kinds of stuff like that. He was raised by his parents, Chris and Angela. They're here this evening. He also graduated from high school in Zionsville. He studied business marketing at Marion University. He mentioned some, what an aspiration to become K-9. Sure, it kind of looked like he was iffy on that, but we'll see. One of the things that he wrote that really kind of resonated with me was that he was inspired by anyone in some type of service, police, military, fire, or EMS. He wrote a quote that we use quite often here. He said, "I find what they do is a notable deed." We talk about this profession being notable, noble, if you do it honorably and with integrity. He also said that Avon is a beautiful community, and it will be honored at the opportunity to work hard to keep it that way. At this time, I'd like to introduce our judge this evening to conduct the swearing in ceremony. It's the Honorable Judge Red Stewart from Superior Court II here in Hendricks County. I'll turn it over to you, Judge.
Thank you. You used a whole bunch of my time there. Thanks, everybody, for having me. This is one of my favorite things to do, get to come out in the community like this, do things like this, swearing in field trips at the courthouse. Those are great. I say the same thing every time, so I'm going to say it again. First of all, at this time of year, it's important we think about family and friends. And you folks, remember when you're out there, okay? Remember out there doing your job. There's nothing more important than your family, your friends, the people you're taking care of. So make sure whatever you do in your job on the daily, that you make sure that at the end of the day, you go home to those people. You'd be a success if you do that, okay? The other thing you need to understand, and I, look, I realize none of you are here to see me or hear me talk, so I keep this short, okay? I get it. And Chief used half my time. So the other thing is, is there's nothing that you're going to encounter that's worth your integrity, your reputation, anything like that. You're going to run into people that deceive you, tell you the mis, right? Mis-truths, occasionally don't even give you the right name occasionally. It's weird. No matter what, you always. I feel pretty much the same way. I've had that reaction many times I've talked. No, 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 and then people walk out. Nothing is worth your integrity. Okay, so remember at the end of the day, nothing else but to be truthful and be set great careers. The last piece of advice I always give when I'm here to do these things is that, I grew up here in Avon. I used to march in Avon Marching Black and Gold. We used to do the homecoming parade down US 36 here. They just closed one side of it. We marched down the other side. That's how few people were here. That was in the, that was a time called the 70s, 80s. You guys, look it up on your internet that you guys have. Anyway, it's a great community. You're right. It's a great community to live and work in. But if you ever have questions about what's going on, if you ever need advice, if you ever want to know what's the right thing to do, you cannot do better than to talk to that man and that man right over there. Those are two of the finest individuals you'll ever want to meet. And they know what they're doing. They're outstanding. So if you talk to them, if you need advice, go to them. Let's get somebody sworn in. Which one is this?
Oh, Quilter.
You've got three kids that all have the same name or something.
You guys can come up. Who's going to pin his badge on?
If you were smart like me, you'd just have one and you'd just have to remember one name. They remind them. I want to say too, that they were the best, absolutely, at saying the Pledge of Allegiance out of everyone here. I heard them and I appreciate it, all right? You guys are awesome. All right. Can I get you to please raise up your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Adam L. Quilter.
I, Adam L. Quilter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend the Constitution.
That I will defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform my duties.
Perform my duties.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
Of the Avon Police Department.
Of the Avon Police Department.
Partially. Fairly.
Fairly.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I affirm that I will enforce.
I affirm that I will enforce.
All ordinances and laws. All directives.
And all the directives.
And policies prescribed.
And policies prescribed.
By the Avon Police Department.
By the Avon Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have a medic device? I assume you're talking about me, right?
Everybody.
Usually when I'm on TV, it's not a good thing. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, Carrier. All right. Going up here, was your, you got family here? Where we want to go?
Face that little camera right over there.
I'm going to go right there. Well, usually if people yell, "Know me like that," they go to prison. Okay.
Just say the word, Judge.
He's got guts. I think he's got guts. I like it. Am I, is the glare off my head causing a problem, or how are we? Are you okay? My Photoshop wig on there or something, right? All right, we ready to go? Can I please have your right hand repeat? I, Stephen B. Carrier.
I, Stephen B. Carrier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend the Constitution.
That I will defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully perform my duties.
And that I will faithfully perform my duties.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
Of the Avon Police Department.
Of the Avon Police Department.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I affirm.
I affirm.
That I will enforce all ordinances and laws.
That I will enforce all ordinances and laws.
And follow all legal directives.
Follow all directives.
And policies prescribed.
And policies prescribed.
By the Avon Police Department.
By the Avon Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. She's going to, oh, here, I'll hold this while she does that. Chief, you know you put him on the spot when you ask him how long he's been married, right? 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 You know it's mere weeks. If he couldn't remember that, he's in trouble about 20 years from now.
It hasn't been too much yet, they're not arguing.
That's correct. Correct. He's smart. He's standing there quiet while she does the work. All right, thank you. Congratulations. You haven't even seen the campus yet?
I mean, I got a tour.
Oh, you got a tour. So you know the tradition of the new guy putting all the Christmas lights and everything up. You know about that. Well, all right. You guys are welcome. Want to make sure you're out here so you can get on television. Make sure. Okay, all right. All right, can I get you to please raise up your right hand or repeat? I'm Randy McDaniel.
I am Randy McDaniel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend the Constitution.
That I will defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform my duties.
Perform my duties.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
Of the Avon Police Department.
Of the Avon Police Department.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
I affirm that I will enforce all ordinances.
I affirm that I will enforce all ordinances.
And laws.
And laws.
And follow all legal directives.
And follow all legal directives.
And policies prescribed.
And policies prescribed.
By the Avon Police Department.
By the Avon Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Cheers.
We'll take a five-minute recess while we take some pictures. Thank you.
Are we good? You are good.
Hang on. There we go. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment, move on to department updates. I'll bill Beachy Mike.
Yes. Yes. I was just worried that Shelby would come and knock me over. It's been a fairly calm couple of months. The petition is just tipped for the end of the year. We do have a filing deadline tomorrow, and we anticipate four or five petitions being filed tomorrow. However, the upcoming, I haven't even been there really for months. And the Plan Commission, it has three cases on its December agenda. The Manor of Avon Primary Plaid, Countryside Estate's Primary Plaid, and the final master plan for Easton Gray. Now, the Easton Gray Final Master Plan Approval will incorporate the rights of way within the Riverwalk District or the, yeah, Riverwalk District. But it won't include any of the land uses. The land uses will have to come back at a future date to be approved through Development Plan Review Petition. But they did file a final master plan approval for the whole Easton Gray, and that will be heard by the Plan Commission in its December meeting. Other than that, I have nothing more. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mike Tully, Director of Planning Building, Building Commissioner for the Town of Avon. I just handed you my monthly report, so I don't expect you to have it memorized at this point. But we had a pretty busy month and brought a bit of revenue. And the big one was Radial, which is a tenant improvement that's going in the 800 and 800-foot warehouse down on 100 South. And that project has already started. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good one. I haven't even had really a month. And the Plan Commission, it has three cases on its December agenda. The Manor of Avon Primary Plaid, Countryside Estate's Primary Plaid, and the final master plan for East and Gray. Now, the East and Gray Final Master Plan Approval will incorporate the rights of way within the Riverwalk District or the Riverwalk District. But it won't include any of the land uses. The land uses will have to come back at a future date to be approved through a development plan review petition. But they did file a final master plan approval for the whole East and Gray, and that will be heard by the Plan Commission in this December meeting. Other than that, I have nothing more. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mike Tully, Director of Planning Building, Building Commissioner for the Town of Avon. I just handed you my monthly report, so I don't expect you to have it memorized at this point. But we had a pretty busy month and brought a bit of revenue. And the big one was Radial, which is a tenant improvement that's going in the 800 and 800-foot warehouse down on 100 South. And that project has already started. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good one.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. I drew the short straw, so I'm here. I'm next. Just as an announcement, we are on a wind advisory right now. We'll have gusts up to about 32 miles an hour all the way through about 3 o'clock on Saturday. So we'll have sustained winds of 20 mile an hour tomorrow morning. So just everybody beware of that. The he's coming back. He's had, it's not been a great project for us. He's had a lot of issues. So he's trying to make it right and coming back and touching up areas that weren't done right the first or the second or the third time. So we're working with him on that. We continue with some of our other little stormwater projects, putting in pipe and closing ditches, fixing other ditches that are open, getting them to drain correctly. We did finish the trees, the tree removal along Dan Jones for the Duke Utility Relocation for the Phase One Project. 100 South Reconstruction. So surface should be completed on that project on Saturday, weather permitting. We should get rain pretty much most of the day tomorrow, but hopefully on Saturday we'll get our surface down. And then we still don't know when we'll get a striping in, but we're hoping for the following week. The trail paving, even, you know, avoiding raindrops hopefully will be done tomorrow. Manscaping items are pretty much done between Dan Jones and All Points, and then we'll have a lot more sod put down between All Points and the end of the project. But pretty much that stuff should all be done by Christmas. So we're still looking to 100 North and Raceway, the design continues. They're working on storm design right now, a design on Ronald Reagan. And 1050 Access Management is complete, and we'll just add that into our construction season next year. I think most of you know that the Dan Jones Widening Phase One did bid on November 16. We did get a bid of 4.7 million, a little bit above our engineer's estimate. The RDC did agree to fund the amount that was bid. Stormwater Utility, we continue with against trying to our billing process. Making it so that people can scan a barcode and be transferred right to an account number or to our website where they can access their accounts. So we're trying to make things again easier for people. MS4, we're doing ongoing inspections. Drew's doing a great job of enforcing our ordinance and, you know, our contractors, for the most part, are doing it, working well. Let's see. Pothole patching. A week from today, Ronald Reagan, the north approach to US 36, where we have the rutting and potholes are going to be milled and filled by Grady Brothers. So that's finally going to get done. And he's promised me that it'll happen next Thursday. So we're looking forward to that. Any questions?
Question I have on your 900 and Angelina Roundabout there?
Sure.
We just had the grand opening of Raising Cane, which created a lot of traffic and a lot of congestion. And I know as we do this, we're going to look at two left turn lanes on the 36 from 900 and a straight through across to the other side and a right turn. But based on that, and there's still many, many more businesses that are either under construction, going to be construction, or ready to open. Is that the right fix?
So we had a traffic analysis done based on projected traffic volumes, which has included full buildout of that entire development. And so the roundabout provided for the best free flow of traffic. So I would say the answer is yes, it should be the answer based on what the design that we had and the study that we had done.
And the only other comment I have with fall just being behind us, have we ever considered the service or residents of leaf pickup?
So we have considered that, but historically what you'll find is any community that does it, which is they anything that doesn't do it is glad they don't. It's a service that is appreciated by the residents, but it's a high maintenance item. And so those communities, department time mechanic, and they're able to buy that equipment and repair it. That would make some sense, but we don't have that same operation because it is a high maintenance item. The sweepers back break regularly. We have a sub kind. We do back out some of the ditches and pipes in the ditches. So we do try to, you know, keep our drainage ways clean by subbing some of that out, but we don't cut these leaves.
I was asking for a friend.
I do have one other item. I'm sorry. We did have a field check, preliminary field check meeting for the added turn lanes for US 36 going from 671 all the way to Dan Jones. All the way to Shiloh Crossing. So that happened just yesterday. I can't remember yesterday, the day before. Yeah, it was yesterday. And so we do have plans available on the side table there if you want to look at. Had any questions about that? Any questions? We do have the signs. They are not up. We called 8-1. Those are all those, yes.
Thanks, Steve. Jared's beating racing you up there.
I've got stuff to do. Got a lot of things in the fire. Jared Wade, Communications Director for the Town of Avon. First thing that I've got going on is we're partnering up with Greg Zuzen to remove leaves off of homes and towns within town limits, I think. Is that right, Greg? I don't know if we are supposed to share that.
I always wanted to be an entrepreneur.
No. First, today, we began the process of the migration over to Microsoft Office 365. An email was just sent out earlier today about how that process is going to work. Right now, as simple as I can put it, is all of our workstations are independent. We work here with the town hall. But that adds some complications to working together and working efficiently and effectively. And that's really what we want to do is we want to be efficient with everything we do. So what we're going to do is migrating everything over to an Office 365 system, which is cloud-based, which is internet-based. That's going to give flexibility for the police to be able to access almost everything and anything they need while they're on the roads. While building and planning is out and about reviewing things, they send access to whatever they need as far as document-wise. The headache that's always been around since I've been here is if one person is working in a document, nobody else can touch that document. This is going to solve that. There could be 30 people working in the document at the same exact time. Again, efficiency, speeding things up, making sure that we use our time wisely. So that process kicks off next week. Our IT partnership with ProNet has been great, helping with that migration process. We're hoping that it's going to be a smooth transition. But like anything new, there's going to be a few things that we got to figure out as we go, and I appreciate everybody being willing to work with me on that. So big props, big shout out to Bill Peoples for spearheading this process and this move. He's not here to say that he didn't do it, so I'm just going to say that he did do it. So. Second, I am currently working with the Parks Department for 23 markings, trying to figure out what's the best time to start releasing information. When's the right time to let the community know about things that are happening? This is going to be a great way for us just to have a 10,000 view of everything that's happening, and that way we can plan together. And we're going to be able to work even more in sync than we currently are. So I'm excited about that. The Holiday and Christmas Lights map is now available on the Avon Action Center. If you haven't checked that out yet, people are certainly going to put up their light shows on there. We are having a contest this year, so it's based off of the votes. You have to sign up for an account, but then you can give it a little like, and you can like as many of them as you want. But whoever has the most likes is going to win a $200 gift card to the restaurant or business of their choice in the Town of Avon. So we're really excited about being able to support a local business and support those that are in the competition. This is for residents that are within the Town of Avon limits. So if you live within the Town of Avon limits, you're going to be able to win 200 bucks to Raising Cane's or Charbonneau's. Or Dan, what's your go-to place? Whenever you come out here, what's your favorite? Charbonneau's? Charbonneau's. That's exciting stuff. Outside of that, lots of little things happening, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you. Nobody wants to ask Jared anything. Shelby Marshall, Parks Director. I attended the, myself and two of my staff, attended the IPRA conference two weeks ago, so thank you for allowing that opportunity. We learned a lot, made a lot of good connections, a lot of networking happens at those conferences. So thank you for allowing me to do that. The maintenance team is prepping for winter. Who knows when that will actually start for Indiana? But the mowers are prepped and stored away and cleaned immaculately and taken care of. I want to mention a couple of things. Tree drop-off starts December 26. So after you tear down your beautiful real Christmas trees, you can hear details online on Facebook. And then big event this weekend, partnership with Washington Township Parks, Avon Chamber of Commerce and the Town of Avon. Avon Parks is the Christmas Day lighting Saturday here at Town Hall Park from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. There'll be food trucks caroling. Santa will be here. He'll make a grand entrance. So we hope to see everybody on Saturday. I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Well, as you just saw, all three of our new police officers have started. They're about to finish Week Two of their pre-basic training. We're hopeful that we'll be able to get them signed up for the next available academy class, which unfortunately isn't until May of 2023. So until then, they're going to be completing their field training program before the academy. And then they'll go to the academy, and once they graduate, they'll come out and do a refresher course in their field training program. And then we'll be a little bit ahead of the curve to get them out there and get them working. We have expanded our partnership and collaboration with Hendrick's Regional Health and their security team. We've added additional training to their curriculum with TASER and with defensive physical tactics to help them so that they can provide better services at the hospital and their security needs. Our Crime Guns Task Force has been really busy in Marion County and all of the surrounding counties, just as they have been in the past months this year. As of today, they've seized over 315 illegal firearms from Indianapolis and the metro area, including Hendrick's County and the other surrounding counties. That's resulted in about almost 200 felony outright arrests and several other state arrests related to the firearms and drugs and other felony crimes. And then federal arrests based off of those arrests this year as well, which will go into the federal judicial system. Our next hiring process begins this Saturday on the 3rd, 7:00 a.m. Applicants will be participating in the physical agility test in the morning, and they will be, if they pass that, they'll move on to the written test later that afternoon. I would encourage any of you and invite all of you to come and take part and witness that process. I think some of you or most of you have been there at least once. It's a pretty neat thing to watch and see. So feel free to come out and join us at 6:00 in the morning on Saturday if you like. But if you'd rather sleep in and stay warm, I understand. Happy to answer any questions. Do you have a question, Ms. Loker?
I did. Could you repeat where that is on Saturday?
The Indiana Law Enforcement Academy in Plainfield. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Next item on the agenda, Council Comment Leaves on Reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Loudon.
Nothing to report.
That was simply Mr. Teveba.
Congratulations to our new officers, and the Parks Board meets next Wednesday, right, Ryan?
Mr. Zuzen.
I echo Aaron's comments. Congratulations on our new officers and stay safe. And then the other thing was, was the Plan Commission that Billy talked about. That's it.
Well, actually, I was going to say that, of course, welcome to our new officers and reiterate that as well. Please be safe. The Planning Commission meeting Monday was actually very interesting. This is, I believe, the first time every petition had no waivers and met all of our staff's recommendations. So very unique. And then the other one, our township board, unfortunate news from our township board, meaning they voted unanimously to not move forward with studying the process of reorganization with us. That's it. New business, we, this is where we need to amend the agenda, correct? So I understand we need to amend the agenda to add an item for the Parks Department to purchase an RTV. So I believe we'll need a motion and unanimous vote to add. Would anyone care to make a motion to that extent?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda and add the Parks Department's request to purchase an RTV.
So I got first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Aaron Teveba.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
All right. That item is agenda, item has been added to the agenda. We can keep it third place in line here.
Yeah, put last item on the new business.
Got it. So next item, award quote for cleaning. Are you speaking, Mr. Sean?
Yeah, I'll do it. And then if Sean wants to pop up, I think it's pretty straightforward. The Police Department has currently been cleaning, doing one cleaning a week. They generate a lot of trash just based on the number of officers and things they have. So two weeks, we got to do that. Unfortunately, the cost of going to two actually exceeds mine and Sean's authority. So we do need to bring it to the Town Council to approve. The Police Department already budgeted it. It's $325 per week for total 16900 for the year. What happened? Any questions?
So how much was it for just what, once a month? And is that what it was before?
Once a week. And what was it before, Sean? Half of that?
But it's been budgeted?
Any further questions? Would anyone like to intercede a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the award quote for cleaning at the Police Department as presented.
Second. I have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Don Loudon.
Four.
Aaron Teveba.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Next item is award quote for IT services.
Yeah, you guys will recall, actually, a month and a half, two months ago, the town actually came and instead of doing hourly services for our IT, we wanted to go to monthly fee. And so the Police Department is actually proposing to do the same thing. So this is, this one's just for the Police Department. It's $3,000 per month, and it's, again, continuing our relationship with proactive networking. Happy to answer any questions.
Guess we'll ask if that's in the budget as well.
It is, yes.
Same things last time. This essentially puts them on call whenever we need it. If we spend $10,000 of their services in a month, it's still only going to cost us that 3,000.
Right. Yeah, truly, it's budget billing, same as like if you do for your utility company. Now, they review it every year, so if we're, if we do end up using a lot, you'll see it go up in future years. But exactly.
Do we have a history of this antivirus or any backup, or that would be an additional fee?
We have had issues in the past, but it's not a commonplace. And again, those things are, this is basic circumstance. If there's anything that really exceeds that, like Jared talked about Office 365, that's outside of our contract. That's we're asking them to do something above normal. This is when Julie breaks her computer and she calls them and she needs it fixed three times a day. This covers that, which is why it's a great deal for us.
Only up to three times. That's improvement.
Getting better.
Just got to stop dropping it.
Throwing it.
There are no further questions or discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
A move. We award the quote for IT as presented.
We have a first and a second. Julie, roll call vote, please.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Aaron Teveba.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Next item on the agenda, the Parks Department request to purchase an RTV. Shelby, you're speaking this one?
Nice green. Thank you in advance for adding this to the agenda. I had my superintendent of maintenance go ahead and do some proactive planning. We had budgeted to purchase two new RTVs to trade in two of our old ones and purchase two new ones in twenty twenty-three. And proactive because shipping time for them is nine to twelve months. I went ahead and gave him the permission to go ahead and get the three quotes. We received the three quotes, the third of which came in yesterday in your packet that I gave you. You do have all three of the emails and quotes. But I want, want to discuss from Booth. In his email, he did state, you know, shipping is, is lengthy for these. As we know, we went through that this year, but he indicated that he actually has one of the RTVs and the Snowblade that we are requesting en route. So it was kind of a matter of that's a, that's, that's rare right now. So I wanted to go ahead and make this request. And this is three parts, that council approves the purchase of the two new Kubota RTVs and the six-foot Snowblade attachment in the total amount listed on the quote. We will trade in a two thousand fourteen Kubota with six thousand plus miles and the six-foot Snowblade that is attached to it, as well as a two thousand eighteen Kubota with three thousand plus hours on it. They will, upon delivery of the first one, take the one, but then they'll honor the trade-in. When the second one gets delivered, they'll honor the trade-in value of that second one and we'll make that switch at that time. And then the third thing would be for the council to approve the clerk treasurer to make the payment for that. And I'll take any questions about these.
So is the motion then going to be for the full thirty-nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eight cents?
We do have it in our budget. This year, we underspent on some areas, so machinery and equipment, that account item has sufficient funds to support the full thirty-six thousand. So I would appreciate just getting it all done and we can award the quote and, and make that payment.
So we're going to, we're only at one first.
Correct, with the Snowblade.
And they're guaranteeing the trade-in value a year from now.
Correct.
Can I amend that? If the other one happens to come in in January, I will pay for it with encumbered funds from this year. We're basically going to encumber anything that if it doesn't come before December thirty-first, we need these funds approved so I can make the payment when it comes in, but it will not be paid until it's delivered.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of two new Kubota RTVs and the six-foot Snowblade attachment in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and eight cents. Also approve the trade-in of the two thousand fourteen Kubota RTV at a value of forty-five hundred with the Boss Snowplow at a value of fifteen hundred and the two thousand eighteen Kubota RTV with Snowblade at a value of six thousand. And for the clerk treasurer to make payment upon arrival of each piece of equipment.
I second that, but just to clarify, there is no Snowblade for the two thousand eighteen Kubota.
That is true. That's apology for having that in there.
Would you care to amend your original motion with that?
Take away the Snowblade for the two thousand eighteen Kubota.
Excellent, thank you. We have a first and a second. Would you take a roll call vote, please?
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Aaron Tivabaw?
Four.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelby. Next item on the agenda, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two-six, our meeting schedule for next year.
Yes, always an exciting agenda item. You guys always approve your planned meeting schedule for the following year, kind of here in December. You guys have gone to a little bit of a hybrid meeting schedule because, because of the holidays in, in November and December, you can't meet the second and fourth. You'll notice this year, actually in two thousand twenty-two, October, November, December were the first and third. Next year, just because of the way the calendar works, it's actually September, October, November, December. Otherwise, you actually have back-to-back meetings. And so in order to keep them every other week, we actually have to do that. So that's the one note that's slightly different, September, October, November, December meets first and third. All the rest of your meetings will be the, and fourth, third day. And then again, keeping our tradition that we've started of the first meeting of the month is a work session at five thirty.
This is a resolution, we're not, it's no introduction, so we can vote on it now. If there's no questions, would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Julia, roll call vote, please.
Aaron Tivabaw?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Next item, final reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three-seven, the twenty twenty-three holidays.
Yeah, every year the Town Council has to approve the twenty twenty-three holiday ordinance. And so it was introduced at the last meeting, and so this is your final reading. Happy to answer any questions.
I think all the questions were last time. There's no further comments or questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call?
Don Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Aaron Tivabaw?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Next item, final reading ordinance twenty twenty-two to three-eight, the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance.
Yeah, same as the holidays, before the end of the year, the law actually requires that the Town Council pass a salary ordinance, which establishes maximum pay for all employees. And so this is set at the budget number that was also approved by the Town Council, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
Head shaking, no, no further questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight, the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Aaron Tivabaw?
Four.
Next item, last item on the agenda, introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three-nine of year appropriation.
Yeah, every year Julie and Calvin, before they close the books, if they have to move any money, they do a reappropriation ordinance. So this is in preparation of that. You'll note there's nothing attached yet, and that's because today is December first. And so the books actually have to get closed at the end of November for Julie and Calvin to do that. So it should be attached with your, for final reading next week, right, your final meeting.
The fifteenth, next week, don't do that.
Not next week. We're working on it next week, you guys won't do it till the following week, sorry.
Any questions for staff? All right, let the record show ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three-nine and of year reappropriation is introduced. Next item, legal counsel report, Mr. Taylor. Thank you. Next item, second of two public, public comment opportunities. If you'd like to, if you'd like to leave a public comment, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address and limit your time to three minutes. I'll get through it, I promise. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment. Next opportunity for council comment.
Nope, just look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday. Come on out.
On Friday is the Chamber Open House, too, from four thirty to seven at American Legion.
Tomorrow?
That's tomorrow, yeah.
All right, council calendar.
Nope, just reminder, tree lighting Sunday and then Saturday, sorry, three to six P M. I got that piece right. And then reminder, last meeting of the year, December fifteenth.
All right, meeting adjourned.